All right, I'll call the Wellington Board of Education Curriculum Committee. Meeting is to order, it's April twentieth, uh, three thirty-three P M. We really only have one item today that's uh to discuss, and that's the overview of the math curriculum. And so we have um Dr. Erin Conley here, we have Heidi Aforismo, math coach. Um, and then right now we have Ann and Laura as board members, so. Um, Erin, you can share your screen and jump right in if you want, and again, this is meant to be the kickoff, just like we've done for every content area so far, and then uh board members, you have uh some fun reading to do once we uh pass things off to you.
You guys can hear me, okay? And see my screen, perfect. All right, so this is just gonna be kind of the overview uh background in terms of choosing the illustrative math program and how we embedded it into the Wellington Public Schools uh written curriculum. And I do have Heidi um our math coach here as well, so I'm sure she'll, she can chime in with some of the questions or Heidi, if there's anything I'm missing as I'm presenting, feel free to just kind of tap uh jump in, okay? Um, so I'm gonna start with the shifts, I know many of you guys are educators, so this is not going to be new news for you, but I wanted to make sure for um the public or anyone who might be watching this, that they understand the shifts uh in mathematical instruction from when we've probably were taught math to the way we teach math nowadays. Um, so starting with the simple fact that tip, the typical math instruction back when we were growing up, um I could speak to myself uh. And it was really memorization for flu, especially around fluency, but memorization of facts and um and and or concepts or formulas and then regurgitation, so or our application of those, which through research and over time, we've learned that actually we go through a process uh as we learn, and the best way is starting with the concrete, which there's a picture here, you can see where you you the concrete form is you manipulatives or hands on uh that that most basic component moving that from the concrete to the pictorial representation of the concrete, which you can see here, this is a tape diagram, the pictorial here, and then eventually uh then applying that understanding to an abstract concept, which is which we are equations um or numbers. So really kind of moving through that process rather than kind of those index flashcards where you're just memorizing and regurgitating. So that's one really um important shift to note. The others, uh again, when we talk about fluency, again, we we always, we think mathematical fluency is memorization of facts. And really, we've gone to uh fluency, changing the definition of fluency, you can see over here in the right hand corner, being the procedural fluency refers to the knowledge of procedures, knowledge of when and how to use them appropriately and skill in performing them flexibly, accurately, and efficiently, so it's no longer just about speed, but rather about understanding when to use a certain formula or strategy or concept, being efficient with it um and being accurate with it, so all three of those concepts and being flexible, so really understanding that there's multiple processes or multiple pathways to an answer. Um, so again, we talk about fluency now being built through number sense flexibility, accuracy, and effish efficiency. Um, fluency within the illustrative math program is built within and across grades through intentional and embedded tasks um and through their questioning within lessons, so that what students learn, student, students learn to be flexible with and evaluate appropriate methods in parallel and in unison with developing their accuracy and efficiency with fact fluency, so for example, um. Actually, Heidi, do you wanna, or I'm gonna speak to, do you wanna speak to that example? Um, one of the first grade teachers was super excited the other day about a number talk that she did that really demonstrates this aspect right here, um but I'm have Heidi speak a little bit to that.
Yeah, so in a um, a first grade teacher sent us this picture about how um she was having the kids solve mental addition problems, and they said, she asked them how they solved it mentally, and they came up with about five or six different strategies without her pre-teaching any of them on how to do it, and in first grade, they were doing things like decomposing numbers, like if it was three plus seven, oh no, that's that equals, it was like five plus seven, they would take the five and change it to a three and a two, and then do ten, the ten plus two, so the fact that even after only one year, like not even a year, the students are getting are able to like have that number sense is really exciting, she was very excited when she sent it to me, too. Um, and then with the fluency piece, I was also going to add that it's still about like, though, there'll still be memorize, not like wrote memorization flashcards like Erin was saying, but the the expectation is still that they're able to like repeat facts quickly once they get to older grades. It's just more about having strategies to like, when you're not sure about what a fact is, oh, I don't know what eight times eight is, so I can double, double, double the other factor, so eventually, yeah, the goal is to memorize, it's just not through a rote way like we're we're used to.
Yeah, and I don't know if you can see this, but this is at uh, does it blur, it blurs, let me see if I
You're sharing your screen with the the slide show, so that's really hard to see.
Okay, um, so anyways, I was gonna show you what she sent us, but it the strategies the kids were using specifically were making fives, decomposing or composing fives, tens, using doubles as a strategy, and then doubles plus one. So they really incorporated quite a few strategies uh for first grade to just to get to how um how you really build that number sense and fluency within the con, while you build the concept understanding to the image within I am.
And she mentioned they were very engaged and ready to share their ideas, too.
Uh, the, and then the last piece is really methodology, so pedagogy around the and how we teach, so again, most of when we were growing up, most of the instruction we we were uh while we were in the classroom was what we would call direct instruction, where teachers relay uh information to the students um and or model uh through a gradual release process, where it's kind of like the teacher does, then we do together, and then eventually the students will do it, and their their mastery comes through practice. So it's just repetitive practice, we have this uh program um as well as our science program, science is inquiry based, um shifts to problem-based learning, which is rooted in inquiry, so it's really capitalizing on students uh curiosity, and it uses the inquiry-based learning model where students are solving problems, so they're provided a problem that they need to collaboratively work through. Um, this process builds a myriad of twenty-first century skills, um for instance, collaboration, problem-solving, perseverance, communication, because they need to be able to communicate clearly their ideas, um their thoughts, and explain their thinking, uh creativity, because as you can see, they're using multiple pathways, strategies, um and processes. But this is a big shift, because you won't really, you, when you walk into a math classroom uh with that's problem-based learning um and or the I am classroom, you're going to, you're not going to see the teacher as sage on the stage, they're not going to be sitting there at the board sh- uh showing the kids what to do, you're, you should be seeing the teacher walking around facilitating discourse within and amongst kids uh adding, uh asking very intentional questions that help students or guide students to their understanding, uh but it is a huge shift in what the classroom and the roles of the teacher and the students look like, it becomes a much more student-centered approach. So those, I believe, so those are the major shifts um that as we think about and look at kind of the math classroom today versus you know, where we probably, you know, how we grew up with math. Uh, the, I linked here um some real, some content, if you can go through any of these, the illustrative math links. So if you'd like to learn more about these different grade bands, uh they go right to the I am site. Here's a an eighteen-minute video that goes pretty deeply into the I am K five math, so if you wanna see kind of what the materials look like, well, you can also do that another way, but this is a great resource, um it taught down here, you can kind of get some more information as well around I am K five math program. We're gonna talk about some of these things, but you can see here that it meets all of the ed reports, um perfect scores in two out of the three areas and and twenty-five out of twenty-seven, so really close to being perfect in all three areas. Um, but there's some, and then the authors are down below, so uh definitely some resources linked within here, uh similar for six, eight. So again, another video for six, eight, and then I did link the nine through twelve, because we do utilize the algebra, the algebra um from the ninth, ninth grade program, so that that is one uh we do kind of range into there, too. But so for any further information, feel free to explore those links and then watch those videos. So why did we choose I am, how did we get to this point of choosing I am as a program, as our major resource uh for our mathematical curriculum? Uh, and it's be, first of all, it, as you saw in ed reports, it is extremely highly rated, um it is, has almost perfect, it has perfect scores in two of the three domains, and a very close to perfect score in that third domain. It's also, it's grounded in best practices for effective mathematics instruction. Uh, again, we talked about that problem-based learning, which is is really critical in in getting to our portion of the graduate skills in conjunction with understanding math content and really preparing our students for the twenty-first century. Um, the programs are rooted in, again, the pedagogical and methodology, it is very rigorous and standards-aligned as well. Um, I will say, having written and seen the program from K through eight, I I Heidi knows, all the teachers have been hearing me, I am even more sold on the curriculum, because I've seen this really intentional spiral of the decisions they make to teach concepts, really um capitalize on what I call blue lines, the schema that kids have. So for example, when they start to teach fractions in second grade, they do it by using clocks. So they talk about half past an hour, so they're 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 teaching time and fraction, but they're doing it through phrases kids have already heard, half past and quarter past are the two they talk about. So they they are just so intentional about how they group concepts um and then how they spiral them and and have the learning progressions go throughout the grades. There was an expert authoring team, which you can look further into on those links I I um had added, and and then lastly, upon my arrival, um when I first came in last year, I interviewed all the staff members, uh six through eight, because six through eight was already using a luster of math before I even came to Wellington. And in my uh intake inter, or as I talked to all the teachers through my interviews, the math department really spoke very highly of how much they liked this program. So when we spoke to the teachers, it was kind of a no-brainer to just go K eight, so that it was um we had the same uh major resource for kindergarten through eighth grade. But those were the major uh reasoning points for why I am. Heidi, I don't know if you wanna add anything?
Yeah, I was just going to add, thank you, I was just going to add for that last one with six through eight using it already, um my last district uh last year was trying to, um I was leading a committee to choose a math program as well, and we reached out to other districts in the area in Eastern Connecticut as well, and there are very few K through eight or K through twelve, twelve programs out there, a lot of programs are K through five or six through eight, so this was like an added benefit that there was some, it's you know, a lot of times like districts will say, oh, this arcade through five program is really strong, but our six three isn't so as great, so it was nice to have something also that was cohesive throughout the whole district.
Thank you. Um, so kid, I am is is interesting, because it was developed, I believe it was developed actually as an open resource, similar to our science, so it is actually available free um through the Kendall Hunt website, uh and so that it, which is a great asset, so it could, because anyone in the community or the public can access many of these resources, including the curriculum, ma- many of the resources we're using for the curriculum. So uh the both these pictures link to the Kendall Hunt website. Um, when you go there, you can choose either the K five math curriculum, uh the six, eight. Uh, there is an accelerated version, so that you can differentiate within the middle school um or the algebra and the nine through twelve learning, but I'm just gonna, for the sake of launching, go to K five. You can see here that there's family materials, that families again can just, you can come in here and see, so let's say you have a kindergarten, you can go to kindergarten, you know that we're in unit two, and this tells you exactly each kind of um section of the unit, what they're working on, exactly how we're, they're being taught, so and conceptually uh you know, both there's pictorial apps uh or a concrete pictorial or abstract, um and then they also give tips for families to what to do at home. If you're interested, let's say, uh instead of doing the family-friendly one, you wanted to see what they're actually doing in their classrooms, you can go into the same unit. Here is um the, this is actually what the teacher uh unit, teacher side looks like, so here's the scope and sequence for all of kindergarten, you can go through the entire what what words they're gonna learn about, what lessons, what standards are tied to what lessons, um again, this is the teacher's side, so it's very um heavy with educational jargon, but I know that sometimes people are curious as to what the actual, and these are the lesson plans, so these are the actual lesson plans that teachers are following. Um, you are limited without uh signing up with an email in the resources link. You don't, you cannot always access, so you have to register, sign into access all of the resources, but you still can see the lesson plans and the general, you know, kind of generally what lesson is, so if a student's ever absent, it is actually really easy to go in and say, oh, you missed this lesson, here's where the lesson is. Um, and again, this is all free and accessible um online through these links. Here's, oops. Down here are the directions um in terms of getting to where you wanna access.
And another benefit to it all being free as well is is that you know, teachers, as they're trying to fill, you know, gaps that exist, they can access any grade level, so they don't have to go and like you know, try and find where it is, or go talk to another teacher, even especially from like fourth and fifth grade, when they're in different buildings, it's been really nice for them to be able to go back to certain lessons and concepts in there, too.
Yeah, and actually, there's another thing I didn't put in here, um but since many of you guys are educators, they have a wonderful depend, what they call like a dependency diagram, and what it shows you is, you know, for kindergarten, um actually, they might have, let me see, they might actually have it. Uh. In the, I don't know, I'd have to find it, but what happens is um it shows you kind of for unit five, what they would have had to master or understand in previous grades specifically by lesson, so it'll be, it it will really say like third grade, unit two, lesson five. Um, you know, this concept, it should have, they have to have an understanding of this before they can move to this, so it helps you naturally differentiate for the students as well and help fill gaps. We've been using a lot of that since for this year, like majorly, we've been really capitalizing on those.
Yeah, especially since they haven't had this yet, so it's not like repeating the same thing they did last year, as of this first year, anyway.
Mm-hmm. Um, so our math curriculum, what does our uh the Wellington Public Schools math curriculum entail, again, illustrative math is our major resource. Um, we do use uh printed teacher, most of the teachers do have printed guides and student workbooks, but we, they also have access to that online uh program, some teachers choose to only use the online component, um it's kind of, you know, based on their preference. Written documents uh translate, we're gonna see them in just a minute, but I, basically, the written curriculum documents translate the material from the I am program. Uh, both the K five, six, eight, and algebra uh unit or modules or in grade levels, um are translated into our template that you guys approved uh for E L A. And just to give you an idea, as I walk through, again, I I will walk through these um in a minute, but the unit descriptions um, well, actually, I'm gonna pull one up, it's gonna be easier to walk through this way, I think. So these unit descriptions right here, these were um, these are pulled verbatim from illustrative math, so as I, you saw kind of the description overview for the units, these are just copy and paste, so those are verbatim from the unit, uh the units online, um or unit books, um. Here are the standards, again, priority and supporting, many of the units and I am focus solely like as priority standards, because they go really deep within the concepts, so you'll see a, many of these units have many bolded standards, because they they really are considered priority for the unit. Uh, in terms of the K, K five has a little bit of a different setup than six, eight in terms of centers, so K five has centers, six, eight do not have centers as part of their programming or part of their routines, um so you'll see in the K five documents that over here, there's uh addressing and supporting centers, so and there's different stages of a center, so for instance, here, check it off, that has up, up for, up to here is three, three stages. The third stage is hitting a priority standard. However, stages one and two are embedded within the unit um and can be utilized for differentiation purposes, but they are supporting, so they may have been a previous grade unit, or it could just be a a previous unit within the grade, or something that the students have had some practice with, but it's not a priority for this unit. So just to give an understanding of the addressing and supporting um centers. Materials and resources, um vocabulary are listed here, these are very specific vocabulary terms. Um, essential questions and big ideas are something I create, I derived from the illustrative math program, so these are not something they provided. Um, I utilized uh after I wrote the unit, would utilize my understanding of what, what were these major arch, big kind of concepts, thoughts and ideas that these units are getting at, and so I created these essential questions and big ideas from the unit, I derived them from the unit, so these are not something I am provided, these are something I did create from that information. Our assessments are listed uh again by, this is very similar to the templates you've all seen, the formative, summative, diagnostic, and benchmark assessments. Um, and so how students are getting assessed, you'll see in the upper grades, um because the middle school teachers, especially our eighth grade teacher, has been teaching this for quite a few years, um she's pretty familiar with it, so she kind of knows some adjustments that she wanted to make, and one of the ones she's been working on are creating performance tasks that are uh more connected to real life, um and a little bit more authentic. Um, and and then doing a few adjustments to the assessments as well, so if they're creating or revising assessments, though, you might see those linked in the this section um with some of the seventh and eighth grade documents, so just in case you see something different, that's why you might see that. And then interdisciplinary, this column is still empty, um this will get filled as teachers become more familiar, and then as we move into project-based learning, because they'll start to make more connections, but this is something that as we build and develop programmatically across subject areas, that this will, this will uh get filled in within time. And then the template, again, similar to what you guys have already seen, uh the objectives pretty much come from the illustrative math program, uh they have kind of a line that usually talks about what the focus of the lesson is. So these are mostly from those, if we're, if they didn't necessarily if if I was reading those sentences that I am had, and they kind of didn't make much sense, or I thought they weren't super kid-friendly, I reworded them. Um, so these are a combination of being verbatim from I am, as well as myself rewording a few. Um, the lesson is just identified what lesson they're teaching, um they would follow it in their book, what centers to focus on, we did talk about, um as we roll this out, we asked uh our golf, Heidi, you're my, hmm, we haven't had this conversation, I, I think we said centers three times a week, is that what we were shooting for?
Um, the program has the centers for K through two embedded in the lesson, so they don't need extra time, although I think a lot of times they don't get to them and end up wanting the extra time, but three through five, they recommend centers twice a week for twenty minutes each, each session.
Yep, so we, that's something we are working, some, some grade levels were ready to try them this year, we were really focused on getting the, it just getting them familiar with the new pedagogy, um and the new, the new practices and the new curriculum. So we didn't, some are ready for centers, but this is, that's gonna be what we focus on next year. And then this is something I actually, so these are created by me, again, derived from the program, so part of uh something I'm really, really very particular about is what does mastery of the objective look like, and I felt far too often it, we kind of leave it for like, hmm, it's not very clear or explicit, so I really wanted to say, like, as kids are doing this, and you know this is your objective, what are you looking for, how do you know that students are progressing or mastering these objectives? So what I did is, as I looked through each lesson, I kind of took apart, what are you looking for and listening for, so what are you gonna see students doing? And what are you gonna hear them talking about um to know that they are actually making progress or mastering standards? So this, this actually is what took me forever and ever, but I I do think they're gonna be really uh beneficial for teachers, so they do get, um and you'll see, I'm gonna show you some upper grades, too, they get more explicit, um and they build upon each other, so you'll see um each lesson kind of adds another bullet or two, depending on what they're focusing on. Um. And I'm just gonna show you that. Here's a seventh grade example. Um, this is on rational number arithmetic. So again, very similar setup. You'll see there's no centers in these, um because this is an upper grade. But same uh essential questions and big ideas, here, this is what I was talking about, where there's some uh quizzes uh and uh assessments listed in here. The other piece to the um six through eight modules is they don't all have checkpoints um or mid-unit uh assessments, so that you'll see here, these uh checkpoints and quizzes are, the teachers are also developing some of these, because they they didn't wanna teach a whole unit, and then find out at the end, um wow, there's all these things the kids are struggling with, so they're creating kind of these more um frequent checkpoints, so that they can address it and get on it sooner. And again, the the elementary version has those already built in, these are the six or eight units. And just to give you an idea of what the cooldown like, or look for, and you can see here, like a look for and listen for by by lesson five, you can see you know, what they look for kind of at the upper grades here.
So just clarification, that the assessments that you're creating wait. What you're looking for, what you're listening for, this is the upper grades?
This one is, all but all them, every grade has the cooldown look for and listens for, so the cooldown is the activity in I am. And so what I did, as I said, as I I kind of di- dissected that cooldown and said, how do you even know if they
Okay.
are doing this right, so that's, these are the kind of what you're looking for and listening for within the cooldowns.
Okay, so you added that to make it yeah easier for the teachers to know if they've met um the objective, okay?
Yeah, yeah, and specifically Laura is because, you know, so often it's like you, especially in math, we're accustomed to looking and saying, oh, right answer, wrong answer, you understand it, because it's the right answer, or they don't, because it's the wrong answer, and quite quite frequently, they might actually understand a good majority and have made a small error, so this is where these help you get to, instead of just looking at your final answer or final outcome on the cooldown, kind of getting to like, what are you listening for throughout the lesson, right, what are you listening for while they're doing this activity, or what are you looking for to know that even if they have the wrong answer, that they might still have mastered this objective?
Right, I lo- I love that you have the listening for, that's
Thanks.
That's great, right, yes.
Yeah, I was actually having a a talk with um uh Mansfield, and Candace was like, I love that, I'm taking that, too, so. Uh. All right, so I think that's, that's the seventh grade, let me go back here and think those are, those are the major components. Um, so that's, that's the written curriculum, I don't think there's, there's no other aspects of that. So I'm gonna pause here, because I know there was a lot of information, and open the floor for questions and comments.
Okay, I had, I had a, I had a couple, um. My first one, I think you pretty much, well, you answered part of it, I, because I was wondering how, like, what were you using before this? It sounds like six through eight. I think this has been used for a while, hasn't it, because
Yeah.
it sounded very familiar to me.
I think this is the fifth year, yeah, that they're
Okay, so it's actually after I was gone, um. What, what were you using, what was being used for elementary?
Um, so uh I believe Erica, Erica had created a curriculum, um it was kind of a homegrown, it used a few different major resources, but predominantly, she, I believe she pulled, she pulled from um the Stanford math program, uh and then really, and amongst some other, I think she had some Eureka math in there, but it was, it was a homegrown curriculum that Eric had built.
Okay.
For the This did not exist at that time.
Okay.
Correct, correct.
She used the, the New York, um
Eureka, yeah, the New York, yeah, Engage New York, which is Yeah, same.
And then I'm wondering um about the other feeder schools to EO and EO, what are, what are Mansfield and and Ashford using, if you know, which is
Yep. I bel- I believe, I just talked to Candace, so I know they're in the process of adopting something. Um, I believe she was looking at I am, I think they might be going with uh Desmos or Gizmos, which is I am, but online, it's just, it's, it has uh some other simulate, or I shouldn't say it is I am, it's rooted in I am, and they call it aligned and designed uh with I am, but it's not like I am, I don't know if it's I am certified necessarily, but they, if you, well, you, Laura, you probably know Gizmos from
I do know Gizmos.
Yeah, it's the same, same program, but with math content, basically.
And before, like, they're still K through five, I know Mansfield, and I believe they still are using Bridges, um which is very similar to I am, it's only K through five, so, so that's, and they have no plans to expand. So.
Yeah, and Ashford is moving, I believe, doing I am. I believe God
And then you said, um, as far as the high school, you're using the algebra for the eighth grade, you know, algebra students, I'm wondering, do, I mean, does it have uh programs going all the way up to calculus, is it?
No, only algebra one, algebra two, and geometry.
And geometry.
And I, I think they are using, I don't know about E O Smith, I I think there's, I know they've been doing some changes to their math, you know, program lately, but I'm not sure exactly what they use for those higher-level maths.
Just, just thinking about that articulation.
Yeah.
Going up there, do you have anything, Anne, jump in? Going up there, do you have anything, Anne, jump in? I don't want to dominate. Was that a no, I?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm doing well listening. I haven't had any questions yet, um, I did, I did teach Bridges when I was still in Mansfield, so they've had it for more than ten years. So anyway.
Okay, uh, and this isn't curriculum related, but what, well, it is connected to the algebra, but there's been, and Heidi has worked with, um. I believe it was April, or April and Stacy are some of the eighth grade math teachers this year. Along with, um, kind of in collaboration with EO for placement around, getting a, a placement for algebra. And being really intentional uh around that decision of who we place, tracking kind of how they do within it. Um, but a lot of conversation and work around that, um, and the, and I will say, I know Heidi and uh the teachers have all come to me very excited. About this work, the work that they've done and, um, you know, kind of that process.
Great. Another thing, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 you go ahead.
I was just going to add, it wasn't related to the question, but I think since you mentioned high school and eighth grade, um. It, also they're coming out with a pre-K program, um, soon they're in the process of doing it. And, um, our pre-K teacher is very excited about that, she's already been pulling some of the easiest K activities, so that's also another benefit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, the, the other question I had, and, and you, and you, and you pretty much answered it. Um, but I just want to kind of point out, because I was wondering, like, this program sounds really good, love that it's free, it's online, you know. For, for the district, but also that people, you know, parents have access to activities to help they can see exactly where. Their child is in units, et cetera, so then I, I'm sitting there wondering, so. What, what have you done, right? So I, you know, my question was kind of like, like, how have, um, how have you needed? I was wondering. What you've added and done, and you, and you answered that, right, with, with, um, coming up with the central question, big ideas. Uh, kind of filling in those things, and especially with the assessments. Um, and, and I can see where that would be very time intensive to take each of those and think. What is it that you're looking for, what are you listening for? To go along with that, I'm wondering, um. Have you come across any of these that you felt needed to be adapted or changed in any way to kind of fit? With Wellington, or, or is, or is it just? They're good.
I'm going to pass that to Heidi.
So I think, um, I know, so because of like, you know, COVID and there's, you know, there being gaps. I am actually does have adaptive units on their own that we've been using, um. A couple other things that I've been working on with some of the teachers this year is when we add. Things like, I think any program, you're going to have to occasionally add something, tweak something, and it depends on the kids you have in front of you, so it's always going to look a little different. But I was really impressed with like going into third grade the other day, because I, at the beginning of the year, I felt like it was a lot of like. You know, worksheets, worksheets, worksheets that weren't aligned, and I went into two of the classrooms yesterday, and they were doing like. You know, um, they were adding in things like, it was fractions on the number line, and fractions on a number line is a tool, it's not a separate concept, it's a tool to understand fractions. So they, one of them had like an interactive number line on her floor, the other one who was like folding sentence strips, so I think. Yes, there are things that we have to add in, and we're kind of discovering them this first year. Especially with, you know, some of the gaps that we have, I think that a lot of the teachers are getting used to adding more. Adding more things that are in alignment with the I am philosophy for sure, even after, not even one year, so.
Laura, this is a really, really popular math program too. So the opportunity to ask questions and live this with the other districts, and you asked about Ashford and Mansfield a moment ago. This is, you know, a conversation that we can now have with many, many districts, um, which is great. Um, there are professionals that we can bring in if we have additional questions that go beyond what. You know, the scope of either our knowledge, or we just need more hands on deck, obviously Heidi is one person. Aaron's one person, so when we talk about, you know, getting people in the classrooms to support. You can find that the, with this program, whereas some of the other programs. You just can't find that, i- it's your, you're trying to build capacity within the district, and that's what you've got. Or you've got the one and done PD sessions, which is, is not really good. I think the other thing that's important with this is. And I don't know why other, other programs don't do this, but y- you want that continuity, K through eight. Um, and so we were kind of waiting, waiting, waiting for that elementary. Uh, program to, to be written, and we knew they were working on it, and that's why Erica was kind of patching. Um, but now that it's there, I mean. Even with the COVID piece that Heidi just shared. We can loop things back in because it's a consistent program. Um, and I think there's real power in that. Um, and, and the, whether it's, you know, how vocabulary is used in the program and by teachers. Um, and just a consistent approach. The thing that I also wanted to say that you chimed in about, so what did you do, Erin, and, and Heidi in the writing piece? I think that's important is that. Is also the consistency in our curriculum now. In approach and writing, and that's really, really important, so take a brand new teacher to Wellington, right? And they are now looking at one type of model. They're looking, whether it's ELA or science, you've now seen, now math is the same framework, right? So where am I looking for the big ideas, where do I look for assessments, all of that consistency. Is really, really important, I think, for new people coming in, and. I, I really feel for elementary teachers in this that have all of the content areas. Um, and let's make it as easy as we can for them. To make sure they understand the resources and know how to follow it and what to look in, and then how to add feedback for the future. So just, I think those are my, my points, I think, that are important to me in the grand scheme of this.
And I completely agree with you, I think, you know, that, that's, that's a big deal, putting it all into a template that is consistent. And as you said, especially for your new teachers, and especially for elementary, which. I have the utmost respect for elementary, two years in fourth grade, and I said, get me back to middle school where I'm just. It is a huge job.
I was just gonna, there was one, a couple, just a couple more things I was going to share, so I wanted to go back to this slide. Um, around professional development, uh, and building off something, uh, what Phil had said too. Uh, Phil had mentioned, um. You know, the, oh, I think I can, I didn't view, but, um. He had mentioned, y- you know, the fact that it's a popular program, so we have a lot of resources available that includes professional development. So this year, uh, we've, we're, Heidi was new to us this year, but she has been an amazing asset. Um, I've heard from pretty much every teacher she's worked with, that phrase in some way, shape or form. Um, and so she's been working with the teachers, really focusing on shifting their pedagogy from that direct instruction to problem-based learning. Uh, differentiation, she's worked heavily with teachers, and how do we differentiate, how do we meet them where they are right now, especially with the COVID gaps? And a new curriculum, that's a double whammy, um, and working with, with them on that. Uh, math, working on mathematical practices, the timing of their lessons, how do I get this all in? Because that can be difficult when you shift to a problem-based uh format, and how do we include centers? So she's really, and she's been taking a very individualized approach with teachers, kind of meeting where they are, and getting them to per. Really build their capacity, um, from wherever they started. Uh, we have had crack, so crack did, we did, uh, if you don't remember, we did put that in the budget last year, so they have provided the initial rollout. Uh, the beginning of this year, as well as we had four online sessions throughout this year with them, which were around two hours each. Which we, uh, worked with Lindsay from crack to design, based on what the teachers were saying they needed. Based on what Heidi was, what we were observing in classrooms that they needed, and so we did, uh, really personalize those professional development sessions throughout this year.
That's a plug for those early release days, by the way.
Yes, yep, so that's what we used those four of them for. Um, and then for next year, we kind of decided, did we want to go back and use kind of capitalize, use crack again? Um, it, or you know, what other options do we have to really build teacher and school, schools, the, both schools' capacity around this program and this curriculum? And as Heidi and I talked through, we found that I am has a certified training. I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but Heidi is actually in her, in a PhD program for mathematics. So we have a really, like, we have a great asset right here. Um, so I, we kind of figured, why not capitalize on that, and for this, for less money than we would have been getting, paying crack. We can train her so that she is an I am certified trainer, however, this is a national training program. Um, so it is a highly competitive process, but Heidi is working on her application, and hopefully we'll. Hopefully that will come to fruition, um, but that is kind of our plan moving forward, uh, that's. Crossing our fingers that that happens, because then we will have a nationally certified I am trainer on our staff.
Fabulous, that's exciting, yeah.
And then the last thing was just, um. When you review, which I will share these tomorrow with you, I just, uh, I just need to download them into PDFs. Um, and then get them in a folder so I could share all the documents with you. Uh, but as you review, if you could kind of use these, this as your focus, you know, is the organization and content reasonable? Um, is the content tied to and supportive of your goals and our P O G work, um, and any edits that you might notice? Um, and then I did not do anything with methods this time around, because you remember ELA, we were kind of pulling from different places. Due to the research and intentionality behind I am, they, they did so much with methodology, the, and pedagogy that. I don't want, we're not touching that, we're, we're utilizing what they have built on. Um, and then any other feedback or questions you might have.
Okay. Erin, what's the P O G work?
Portrait of the Graduate.
Oh, thank you, okay, thank you.
And I can stop sharing.
Good, that's a nice focus.
That's helpful to have that to look for.
Any final questions, comments, as Tracy jumps in, poor Tracy.
Are you, when we present this to the board, Erin, are you going to go over a lot of this with them too?
Yeah.
A wonderful, it's, it really helpful to understand the history and the.
We'll do the same kickoff and that we've done for all the others, so when we introduce. You know, ELA, we do the kickoff, we do the same thing for science, we'll do the same thing for each of the content areas, that way. They have some background knowledge, hi Tracy, um, can really have a con, you know, the idea of where this is coming from. Um, and really before reviewing. Because i- if you don't have that back, just like you, right, we are doing the same thing with you, we want you to have the background of why this is done the way it's done. Um, and now you can, with that lens, go and review the curriculum, right? Um, and provide feedback, so we'll do the same thing for the board when it gets to that time.
Excellent, thank you.
Tracy, we literally were just, I think, wrapping up, sorry, um, it's okay, it's recorded, you're muted. You're muted, it's okay, you're, if, this is recorded, and this is just high level overview. Um, and so, um, it's the same format that we've had. Erin will share her PowerPoint presentation and all the documents tomorrow. Um, and then she just shared at the, and the, and Erin, when you share that, the focus will be on there, right?
Yes.
Last slide.
The last slide.
Um, so there's a few things that she shared on there, Tracy, that as far as. Um, when you review yourselves, just some focus points to, to look for and make sure you really feel like it's solid. Um, and so that's on the presentation as well, so, um, you didn't miss much, don't wa- don't stress.
No, I apologize, Mike, I'm just, um, in crunch time with my. Or in Dillingham program with an exam due and all sorts of things, and it fell by the wayside.
No problem, no problem, that's a wonderful thing about recording. And this is the overview, so you're going to be able to review and ask questions at, you know, the, the next meeting, well. Um, let, let's talk timeframe wise, uh, how long do you all want to review? And Erin, do you remember, um, approval date at this point, do you remember any of that, does it matter?
I don't remember.
Really matters. We're on track, um, so how long would you all like to take to review?
And we're looking at K eight?
Uh, plus algebra, and actually, just to note, when I send you the documents tomorrow, it's going to be K eight. I will add algebra next week, I just didn't get, finish algebra yet, so that's going to be next week.
Okay.
So, uh, if you, I, I don't know if you're thinking June approval. Honestly, it, June, July, August, it doesn't matter, it's, it can be approved in any of those. Um, so if you are in crunch time, I just heard Tracy say that, Laura, you said that in the beginning. So if that's the case, and you, you know, want to aim for maybe a, a July, I, I don't think that's an issue for us. Um, it's just a matter of making sure we can meet sometime in the summer and, and that Erin and Heidi are around if we, we need Heidi. Um. Cause obviously.
After July first. Seth? After July.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm away and Heidi's getting married.
I'm getting married on July first, you know. Congratulations.
So, so our next meeting is July first, is that what we just?
Where's the location now?
I love weddings.
That's up to you, I mean, that's, Tracy and Laura, do, do you, you want like, uh. Cause I'll have Brenda try and schedule it out, so we can, you know, the earlier we know, especially if it's summer work, that. Everybody knows, and we can make sure we don't, you know, we're working around that. If you think that we can do it in June. Um, we could try and do that before break. Do that, if that works.
Two, alright. I just, so, we need to have another meeting, just curriculum, after we've read it, that's like our next meeting.
Correct.
And then it needs to go to the whole board. So when, when you're talking about June, is, is that like going to the whole board? Like.
So what I. Yeah, good question, so this is for, uh, uh, an, uh, I'll say, uh, uh, appropriate timeline for approval. Um, if we did an August approval by full board, we really need to give it to them in July.
Right.
Um, which would mean that we're presenting the high level overview at the July board meeting. Which means you need to make sure your work is done, um, review edits, and you're ready to send it. Um, at some point in June, um, because they're not going to get the documents really before that July board meeting, it's just. The high level, and then we, we give them to the next day, and they'll have a, a month. So, can we, could we, is that enough time, I mean, it's probably six weeks, maybe, I think something like that, five or six weeks. Um, it'll get you through some of that crunch time, and maybe we can meet sometime in June, does that work?
That sounds, that sounds good, I, I was going to ask for three weeks, so.
Okay. Well, and then it becomes, honestly, Laura, it becomes crunch time for us too, it's.
Yeah, I know, it's like, when I, when I breathe, then, and then it's hitting, hitting the K twelve.
So, um, Anne and Tracy, is that okay for you, maybe we can look for, at the first full week in June?
That works for me.
And then even if, and if we're ready then, and things are good, and you want to make the recommendation, we could potentially even put it on the June board meeting if we wanted to.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea to give everybody else two months. If we could put it, if we could try to get it on the June board meeting. And then we could do it also before Heidi's wedding, and then, um, you know, and then. They would have two months to read it, which I think in the summertime is good, because people learn is. Um, organized and about things like that. And do we have any curricular, or is this our?
Social studies is next, and then you. Yeah.
Social studies, okay.
This will be the next bigger one, yeah.
Okay, very good. Boy, you're amazing, Erin. You just keep pumping them out. Thank you, you're amazing, yeah, what, what would we do without you? What we had been doing for the past few years, right, before, right?
Remember that statement if there's a recommendation in the future.
Yes, okay.
Um, so I'll try and have Brenda schedule something for June fifth or sixth, around that. Um, and then obviously, in the, you don't have to wait for that meeting. If you have some simple edits or things like that, please email Erin ahead of time, she can fix things as we go, it's just significantly easier. Um, especially if we're going to try and move it to the full board in that June meeting. So if you have any of those edit things, do that in advance, if you, if it's a discussion point. You can let her know, but let's have that discussion as a group, uh, that, in that early June meeting, okay?
Laura, Laura, as you read it, you're going to get, there's so, the upper grades have so many perfect segues to sign.
Well, I just, I love, I mean, I love the whole inquiry-based math, which, I mean, that's something that you're really going to need to explain. Because it's foreign to most people.
The whole concept of fluency, just that is for, foreign to people.
Yeah, like to actually understand the concepts, not just memorize how to do something.
That's right. Okay.
And the flexibility, the flexibility of the thinking. And the flexibility, the flexibility of the thinking.
Oh, yes, yeah.
All right, well Tracy, you get, you get to watch a recording if you want to. Thanks for jumping in. Um and I'll have Brenda reach out to everybody and try and schedule something that first full week of June. All right.
Good.
Okay, thank you very much, Ian and Erin.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, it's four twenty-three PM. And have a wonderful rest of your day. Go enjoy the sunshine. It's beautiful out there.
Yeah, okay.